Good evening, welcome to the February 4th, 2009 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. First of all, I want to welcome a group of the youth leadership, Rutherford, from Segal High School here tonight, so welcome. Glad you guys are here to join us tonight. The first thing on the agenda tonight is to approve the minutes of January 7th, 2009. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have one item under the consent agenda this evening, and that is Ashwood Cove, a development entrance sign for apartment complex located along the Last Cassis Pike, Hazelwood Street, and North Tennessee Boulevard. Ashwood Cove Apartment Homes is the developer. Let's see, Ms. Ely, are you doing this one?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Anything you need to say about that on the consent agenda?
Oh, no, I thought you were talking about the first one who was listening, Ms. Logan.
Is there anybody on the Planning Commission, on the staff, or anybody in the audience that'd like this item removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have seven public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is an annexation request for approximately 24 acres located north of Joby Jackson Parkway. Joby Jackson Parkway Partners, GP, is the applicant. Ms. Logan, good evening.
Um...
Ms. Ely, excuse me.
Thank you. Yep, Ms. Ely. It's nice to see you guys this evening. What you have before you is a request to annex property located north of Joby Jackson Parkway. If you look at the map, it's the area shaded in the fuchsia color. The applicant has indicated the study area will be combined with an existing lot currently located along Joby Jackson Parkway, which will give it vital access to Joby Jackson Parkway. As the parcel currently is, there isn't any access to either Manchester Pike or Joby Jackson Highway, so the applicant is aware and actually has begun the process of combining that lot with one of the existing lots so that it can have access to that large road. The Plan of Services has indicated that the city will be able to provide services to the study area immediately upon effective date of annexation. The subject property is contiguous with current city limits on two boundaries, on its western and southern property lines, and it's within the City of Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary. The applicant does have a rezoning request, which is the subject of the next agenda item, not the subject of this public hearing. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing to consider adopting the Plan of Services to annex the area shaded on the map before you. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have on this area either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions to Ms. Ely? Does the developer wish to make any statements before we proceed with the public hearing?
Not at this time.
Okay. Before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules that we abide by at our public hearings. We'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. When you come to the microphone, please give your name and address. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes if you would. All your comments should be made directly to the Planning Commission and not the staff or other members of the audience. If you do have questions pertaining to something pertaining to the applicant, we will try to answer those at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, asking anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this matter. Anybody at all? This is on the annexation of this. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, are there no questions? I move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next item is a zoning request for the same property, approximately 24 acres of land located north of Joby Jackson Parkway, to be zoned light industrial simultaneous with annexation. Joby Jackson Parkway Partners, GP, is the applicant. Ms. Ely?
Thank you again. As you stated, this is a rezoning request for a portion of property that's approximately 24 acres. It's a portion of a larger 89-acre parcel. This area was discussed for annexation in the previous agenda item, which you approved. The property is currently zoned R-15 in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County that allows various agricultural and residential uses. The surrounding zoning to the west and to the south is light industrial. The EOM Farms Industrial Development, Pretoria, Interstate Warehousing, and Perfect Equipment are all contiguous with the property on the western and southern side. There's a residential development located to the southeast, and then there's a PCD zoning area, which currently is undeveloped but has been approved for a mixed-use commercial center. To the north and to the east is an area that's an unincorporated area of Rutherford County. The applicant's requesting to zone the property LI, which is Light Industrial District, simultaneous with its annexation, to allow the property to develop as an industrial park. But because the applicant is obtaining only the southern portion of property, not the subject area will not have any access to right-of-way, as I stated before. The parcel which it will be combining with is already zoned LI, Light Industrial District, and that's also what the applicant is requesting to be rezoned to. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning this or zoning this property Light Industrial District simultaneous with its annexation. Staff is here to answer any questions, as well as a representative from the applicant. He did tell me that he didn't have a presentation for you, but if you would like for him to speak, of course, he's willing to.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Ely or from the applicant? Thank you, Ms. Ely.
Okay.
I'll open the public hearing at this time, asking anybody to come forward that would Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no questions, I move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The third item tonight is a zoning request to remove a portion of land from Boxwood Plantation Plan Development by rezoning approximately 20.28 acres south of Salem Pike from PUD to RS-15. Hubert McCullough is applicant. Ms. Ely?
Thank you again. Mr. Lewis is putting a map up for you to get you reacquainted with the area. What you have before you is a request to remove a portion of property, which is approximately 20.28 acres, from a larger planned unit district zone, which is 103 acres. This PUD was approved and zoned and named the Boxwood Plantation of Rutherford, LA. To the east of the property is a church, to the south are residential, single-family residential uses. To the east is zoned RS-15, and to the north. And staff expects that the paradigm will shift in the future when this area is developed, that RS-15 zone area is really an interim zoning. When it was annexed, it was just default zoning to RS-15, so that'll probably be more of a mixed-use commercial center, like proposed in the land use study for this area. In the area that's requesting to be rezoned from PUD to RS-15 is a house called the Boxwood House. This house was placed on the Register of Historic Places, National Register of Historic Places in the eighties. The applicant is wishing to remove the portion that includes that house and then rather large, or 20 acres around that house, and he has stated that his intentions are to divide that into three lots. Under the current zoning, PUD, that house can be used as a residential unit. It could be used as a public building, an office, a private clubhouse, a bed and breakfast. And if it were to be rezoned, then it would only be permitted as right to be used as a single-family residence. To the south are the planned unit development as currently zoned would allow 50 attached single-family units that are similar to zero-lot line units. If you look in your packet on the back of the staff comments, the applicant has submitted a concept plan, which shows how he anticipates subdividing this in the future. Of course, being RS-15, if the lots meet our minimum requirements and our zoning ordinance for an RS-15 lot, then he could divide them into more of those, but that's not really the intent. The Boxwood House is a focus of this larger planned development. As you may recall from the planned development, the architectural landscaping that will be a part of this new development will mimic what is currently in the Boxwood House. Removing, taking the Boxwood House out of the planned development doesn't take away the requirement for those new buildings to meet those similar architectural requirements in the formal landscaping, but it will just take that house out of the development as a use. So, let's see. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning this property from the PUD planned unit district to RS-15. Staff is available for any questions you may have, and the applicant hasn't prepared a presentation to you, but if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer those.
Okay. Any questions to Ms. Ely? I think we're representing from the developers here. Mr. Horde, I believe. Mr. Horde, do you have anything you'd like to say, sir?
None. No, I don't. Thank you. Nice to see you.
If there's no questions, I'll call the public hearing to order, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against this proposal. There are actually people here. Okay. Nobody coming forward, we'll close the public hearing.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ely, this looks like a downzoning. The use will be to go from an RS-15 to an RS-15 from a PUD, and a PUD's going to allow much more development than this would. So, I would consider that a downzoning. What is your professional opinion on that? Is that correct or close?
Yeah, that's close, because as it's zoned now, 51 residential units would be permitted in that area, and zoning it to RS-15 would reduce the number of single-family residential units that are used there. So, if you want to say downzoning, I think that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Mr. Young, in support of what you're asking, and maybe to add something to it, two things. Number one, RS-15 is the city's most restrictive residential zone. We don't have any zone that is more demanding for single-family development. This is the one that, this is our most restrictive and most demanding. So, that's is, yes, a very appropriate holding zone or appropriate downzone. And number two, part of what they are demonstrating on their little concept plan, and I realize that you can't see it because it is very, very small print. Your magnifying glass might help that, but they're demonstrating that they intend to place restrictions on the property that will restrict any house from being able to be built in front of that front line. They're putting in a front setback line that will be parallel with the front of that house. So, no house can be built on there, and this is a restriction that they intend to place on it because they desire to protect the house that they've put so much blood, sweat, tears, and money into preserving.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item D is a zoning request for approximately .21 acres on the corner of East Sevier Street and South Highland Avenue to be rezoned from RM-16 to RS-4. Habitat for Humanity is the applicant. Ms. Ely?
Good evening again. I hope you guys don't get tired of listening to me tonight. Mr. Lewis just put a map up in front of you that shows the area which is requesting rezoning. It's orange. It's on the northeastern corner of East Sevier Street and Highland Avenue. Just across the street is a landmark I think we're all familiar with, Clearview Lunchroom, and it's zoned RM-16, as well as the contiguous properties to the northeast and west of this property. To the south, the properties are zoned RS-4, Single Family Residential District. The property currently requesting rezoning is zoned RM-16, which would allow single-family residential uses as well as multifamily residential uses. As it currently is, the minimum lot requirements that our zoning ordinance requires would not allow the resubdivision of these two lots into two more equally sized lots. So, the applicant has requested that you consider rezoning the property to RS-15, similar to the zoning that's on its contiguous side to the south, so that that property, the bulk requirements for RS-15 would allow that property to be resubdivided. When I first presented this item to you, you requested a concept plan to show how the applicant Habitat for Humanity is requesting to resubdivide these properties. So, if you look on the back of your staff comments, you can see that Mr. Lamb was right and that the two lots would face Highland Avenue. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning these properties from RM-16, Multifamily Residential District, to Single Family Residential District. Representatives of Habitat for Humanity are here this evening. Don't say anything. And they don't have a presentation prepared for you, but if you'd like for them to say anything, of course, they're available. If you have any questions, Mr. Adelot, or I would like to answer them for you either now or after the public hearing.
Any questions of Ms. Ely or Mr. Adelot, or of the representatives from Habitat for Humanity? Mr. Gill?
I have just one. You said that they're going to face Highland.
Mm-hmm.
Given the way where the dividing line of the property line is, I'm kind of lost as to how this...
They would resubdivide the properties. You can see that the property that's the easternmost property is very, very narrow. As it currently exists, I mean, both these lots are vacant. It would be practically impossible to build something on it, so their intent is to make them two more evenly sized lots. So, on the concept plan, they would be resubdividing the property, so you would see a plat in the future that would show the property line going like this.
So, in other words, so after it's resubdivided, the black line, you've got dividing, the tracks now disappears, and then you...
That's right. It just disappears.
It just disappears.
That's right.
The other direction.
And I've laid on your desk a more current concept plan. The plat or concept plan that they had given you before had one of the lots that was just under 4,000 square feet, and we know, and the applicant knows, that you can't round with lot sizes, so they had their surveyor do some amendments to make both lots meet our minimum lot requirements that are recalled for in the zoning ordinance. These two lots, Mr. Halbert, and you'll probably be interested in this, I believe that they're going to make an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals, maybe for some setback variances, to make the houses line up with existing houses, like our Manny Avenue plans suggest, but that's not what they're requesting at this time, because they can't even resubdivide the lots unless they get downzoned from RM-16 to RS-4.
And that problem that they're, and that is in order to be consistent with the Manny Avenue plan, and that would exist whether or not they were in RM-16 or RS-4. It would be the same situation.
If you drove down Sevier Street, you can see several of the houses that have had put up in that area. Part of their goal is to get rid of some standard housing, tear that down, so that people don't live in a condition like that, and then build safe, affordable housing that people have to put, applicants put sweat equity into it. So, them being able to put two houses here would be an asset to our community, because we'd have two houses that are safe, safe for people in the area.
Any other questions? Mr. Young?
Ms. Smith, how many houses have you all built in the last 10 years? No, you don't have to get up. You can just shout it real loud, so we can hear it.
I think she's got laryngitis today.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. About 50 houses.
Fifty houses in 10 years?
We just started house number 86.
That's great.
They just started house number 86 in Rutherford County as a whole.
If there's no other questions, we'll open the public hearing at this time, asking anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second. All in favor in the cap of saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item is the annexation request for approximately 35.24 acres north of Dejarnet Lane. Rutherford County Schools is the applicant. Ms. Ely?
Thank you very much.
Moving too fast for you.
Yeah, you guys are on a roll. It's just a bonus, I guess.
Thanks for banning.
Mr. Lewis, I've got the map for you.
Vanna Lewis over here is having a hard time.
Well, it's cold. He's moving slower.
A new name for Mr. Lewis.
The Rutherford County School Board has requested that the Planning Commission consider annexing the property that it owns. The property's located along the northern side of Dejarnet Lane. There are two parcels here. The school board has indicated that they'd like to build a middle school in this area. They'd like to begin building that this year. I know that I've read the paper that they're still talking about when they are actually going to build it, but the letter that they submitted to you, Planning Commission, states they'd like to begin construction of that school this year. As you remember, we included one parcel as additional study area. This parcel is addressed to 789 Dejarnet Lane. The city legal staff has advised Planning Commission, council, and staff that we cannot legally surround an unincorporated area of Rutherford County, so if we did not annex that parcel, then that would have a situation where we commonly call it having an island effect, where there would be incorporated area surrounding an unincorporated area, so that's not a safe and effective way of providing services. So, we've included that area as additional study area. There's a single-family house located there, but the two parcels that have requested annexation from the school board are currently vacant. I prepared a Plan of Services, included it in your agenda packets. The additional study area, of course, is located between Pittard Elementary, and it would be next to this future school site, and both of the parcels are located north of Oakland's High School. The additional study area is currently receiving city water service, but they don't have city sewer service. If this parcel that the school board has requested annexation of is annexed, then we, as city staff, would require the school board would extend the sewer line to stub into the parcel, so that that parcel would be able to tap into our sewer in the future. As it is now, that wouldn't be available. Other services that the city provides will be available upon effective date of annexation per the Plan of Services. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing to consider the annexation of these three parcels, and if you have any questions about the Plan of Services, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions at this time? Thank you, Ms. Ely. I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. You're right, Ms. Ely, we are on a roll. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission?
No questions, Chairman. I move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next item is an annexation request for approximately 91.35 acres along Manchester Highway. Once again, Rutherford County Schools is the applicant. Ms. Ely?
Thank you. This is the last time I'll be presenting something to you this evening, so thank you for the opportunity. The Rutherford County School Board has purchased property that's located along the eastern side of Manchester Highway. You can look at the map and see that it's the area shaded in orange. This property is contiguous with current city limits, both on its northern and western property lines. The city limits is identified as this green hashed area. The Rutherford County School Board has wrote a letter to Planning Commission and City Council requesting annexation for this parcel, because they'd like to receive city services in order to construct a middle school on this site. They, once again, have stated they'd like to begin construction of the school this year. They've also stated that sometime in the future, a high school may be built on this site, but as for now, they're just wanting to build that middle school. The Jones Family Foundation Plan Development is located to the north, if you're wondering what that large area is. It's currently undeveloped, and the applicant hasn't began moving forward with the process of beginning development on that. I think that they're just, they knew it was a long-term development idea, so they're still waiting for that. The developer will be responsible for extending services into the study area. The developer would be Rutherford County School Board, so water service would need to be extended to the site, the lines that currently serve the area. As a preliminary, preliminary view by me and some staff, city staff, is probably not large enough to serve the properties, they'll probably have to extend sewer a little bit further away from Joby Jackson Parkway, and a fire department expects that they're going to require this building to be sprinkled, since it's more than five roadway miles from any city fire station. We have had, we being the city, have been in negotiations with putting a new fire station on Joby Jackson Parkway. We haven't gotten that approved yet, but that's something that we're looking to in one of our planning endeavors, is to put a new city fire station on Joby Jackson Parkway. The area requesting annexation will be able to receive city services upon effective date of annexation per the Plan of Services, which I've given you. If you have any questions regarding the Plan of Services, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions?
I have one. If it's more than five miles from a city fire department, will that not affect the protection class of that area once it's zoned?
The city is, the City of Murfreesboro has an ISO 2 class rating. It may affect it. We can't say certainly. That's part of the reason why we would require it to be, have sprinkler system, because it's a little bit further away. It possibly could affect it, but I don't, they don't have a hard-class rule that if we annex this, then the entire city goes down to ISO 2. But my conversation with Chief Honeycutt was that, he said that this would, may affect our rating, or at least in this area.
That property itself, since it's more than five roadway miles, may not be able to enjoy that class if it were rated for an insurance policy. However, it will still be able to get very good service. It's just further, it may not be quite as fast as something closer. The reality is, we will still be able to provide services like the first responders that will, may be very valuable and helpful. Also, we will be able to provide the full-time trained firefighters and the equipment that volunteers simply do not have the ability to have. So, they will still get good protection, but from a rating, because the rating services look at things like distance from fire stations, we may not be able to have that today. We, as Ms. Ely mentioned, we are searching for a site in the area. We are actually in some very, we've got a site, we've pretty much nailed down, it's just not ready to move forward yet, and it will be very close. Now, that's the first step. A site has to then be funded for construction and then staffed. Even if it's constructed, it may not be staffed. So, we're looking at that. But we expect this to be an area that, as we recover from this recession, or whatever we're in, we will see renewed activity. And because of the industrial buildings, we expect it's going to be a pretty high priority to get that out. We're seeing industrial development along Joby Jackson Parkway, and we'll probably be moving that in the future.
Mr. Halbert, in the Plan of Services, the feasibility portion of the Plan of Services, I also noted that if there were emergency calls to the site, we would have three fire stations at a minimum that would respond to this, and that would be our headquarters on Vine, our fire station on Mercury Boulevard, and our one on Pitts Lane, so especially since it's a school, we consider it a priority.
Okay. Any other questions?
I want to make sure if I can.
Sir?
How about your question? Were you asking if we annexed it now with the residents on it, because that would change our rating?
I mean, in the, before the school gets built?
It would be, that, no, that wasn't my question. But that's a legitimate question.
I'm not sure I understand all the ratings that we have, and if it actually changes...
There's two situations. There's a couple of situations, and one is, would it jeopardize the rating of the entire city? We don't believe that it would. We believe it would be that that isolated area that's beyond the five roadway miles may not be able to enjoy the ISO 2 rating. And really what that gets down to is about how much your insurance would cost. Now, and this is a situation where they probably have cheaper insurance than if they were unincorporated, because they're probably going to have a nine, but they may be a five or a seven instead of a nine.
But being annexed.
Right. And even though the rating may not be there, they're still going to get absolutely excellent fire protection, and the things that go with the fire protection, the fire department, like first responders.
They'll be getting more than what they would get if they remain in an unincorporated area of Rutherford County. Also, having an ISO 2 class rating gives us bragging rights as a city, so that's another important aspect of it.
Mr. Gill?
And I may be wrong about this, Joseph, but my understanding is that, actually, I may be wrong, but I didn't think that the ISO ratings look at specific areas of a city and classify one different than another. Either the entire city is an ISO 2, or it's not. You can't say that part of the city has a different rating than the rest of the city overall.
Well, Ms. Gill, there is some uncertainty on my part, but I do recollect that in years past, that before we built some of our fire stations, some areas didn't enjoy the same rating as the rest of the city. For instance, before we built the fire station on Florence Road, the area along New Nashville Highway, Broad Street, where it touches Smyrna, had a different ISO than the rest of the city, because they were more than five roadway miles. The construction of the fire station on Florence Road fixed that. So, I believe that that has been the case in the past. Now, whether the, there, that has changed, I'm not aware that it has. We don't want to jeopardize the entire city's rating, and to my belief, and from what we've discussed with the fire department, this would not. It would be just this isolated area where this is at. And right now, the risk is relatively, well, it's not there, because all there is is one vacant structure that's going to be slated for demolition in the near future.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, because our fire department's worked very hard to achieve that rating, and I think we're one of what, one of only two cities in the state?
I think there's only one other.
That's from, there's us and one other city in the entire state that have achieved that rating, and I wouldn't want to do anything to jeopardize that.
Mr. Gill, we, if we move forward under the assumptions of, as we described it tonight, we will endeavor to have a hard answer before the council meetings.
Thank you.
A public hearing. Because I think what I'm telling you... Mr. Ely, we, if we move forward under the assumptions of, as we described it tonight, we will endeavor to have a hard answer before the council meetings, a public hearing. Because I think what I'm telling you is absolutely correct. It has been how I have been advised in the past. If that has changed, I certainly want to know about it, and so would the planning commission.
In which three fire stations, again, would, because I think you mentioned Pitts Lane, and I don't think that's what you would mean, given the...
Let me look at my memo from Chief Honeycutt, and I will make sure that I tell you the most correct.
Because I would think even the one on South Church would be closer than...
Well, according to Chief Honeycutt, the sentence says, these stations, well, four stations will respond to this proposed educational occupancy. These stations are number two, located on Runnymede Drive, number three, located on Mercury Boulevard, number eight, located on Pitts Lane, and headquarters located on Vine Street. So I was wrong, there are four stations that will respond to this, not three, and those are the Pitts Lane, Runnymede Drive, Mercury, and headquarters.
Okay. So he does have the one on Runnymede or South Church listed?
Yes, he does.
Higher in order, okay. That doesn't make sense.
Okay. We need to conduct...
I'm going to point out one more thing.
Sure.
When the connection of Joby Jackson over to South Church Street is constructed, that will also take care of part of that problem, because then we would be more, we would be closer than five roadway miles.
Right.
So that's something I think you want to know, and that is in design actively underway.
And I don't mean to speak ill of the request at all, I just want to make sure that our ISO rating stays intact. I think this is a wonderful site for a potential school to be built.
You have valid concerns, very good. And that's part of the reason that our fire chief is saying that the building would be sprinkled. That's not something that's automatically applied to schools, but looking at the site, that would help improve the respond time for this building and taking care of it. So I think that the ISO 2 would take, would factor in the fact that it's a sprinkled building, which isn't always mandatory.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no other questions from the planning commission, I'll ask for a motion.
Chairman, I would move for approval.
Second. Motion's made, and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The final public hearing tonight, item G, is proposed amendments to the sign ordinance regarding flag signs, flag poles, and flag poles, planning staff, and the codes department of the applicants. I guess, they told me either Mr. Adalot or Mr. Ives would make this presentation, but apparently there's been a change to that, so Mr. Whitaker, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. I would love to hand this off to Ms. Ely as well tonight, but it looks like you're stuck with me. The planning code staff are recommending amendments to the sign ordinance dealing with flag signs. Section one of those proposed amendments would exempt owners of single-family homes and one- to family dwellings from having obtained flag pole permits for erecting a flag pole. Naturally, the code department would still be responsible for monitoring height and setback requirements for those. Section three of the amendments would add a new subsection to the temporary sign ordinance allowing unlimited number of non-commercial flag signs for temporary events which have received the BZA special use permit. Those flag signs would be limited to 24 square feet and could not be up for more than seven consecutive days. I'll be happy to answer any questions this time.
Any questions from members of the planning commission? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Anybody at all? Seeing nobody rushing to the microphone, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman.
I just want to make one comment, if I may, Chairman. I think this is a good example of us having had a year or so to look at the most recent regulations we've had regarding this issue and seeing how they work, and now having the opportunity to loosen some of those regulations to make things a little more efficient for our citizens, and I appreciate that.
That being said...
Chairman, I move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That completes the public hearing portion of our agenda this evening. We'll move next into Platts and Plans. We only have one item under Platts and Plans tonight, that being given place, site planned for 13,187 square feet on 1.58 acres, zone RM16, located along Greenland Drive and Given Court. Oakland Properties is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir, good evening, thank you. This site plan that we have before you tonight is at the corner of Greenland Drive and Given Court, and is zoned RM16, and multifamily residential is permitted use there. The applicants went to the Board of Zoning Appeals in January to ask for a couple of variances on the property to, in effect, render a better site plan, and the Board of Zoning Appeals did grant that variance. The site plan that's before you this evening does ask that they submit a photometric plan, which has not been submitted, and that was a requirement of the Board of Zoning Appeals concerning parking lot lighting. And also, I wanted to point out to you that when we originally reviewed this plan, we had been asking the engineer for information on the retaining wall. On the revised resumme we received yesterday, staff had some concerns with the segmental retaining wall that was shown. We have since then spoke with the engineer and come up with an alternative design that will have to be more of a poured concrete wall, and that's because of the area that lies between the back of the building and the property lines does not allow sufficient width for the stacking of a segmental retaining wall. Therefore, they are working with staff on that, and we feel that we can definitely resolve that issue prior to permit, and would just ask that, if the plan is approved tonight, that prior to permit, that we submit a photometric plan and that we receive our structural plan for this retaining wall by structural engineer. I'd be glad to...
And we may need to have a, some sort of railing on the top of that wall to keep the adjacent property from being maybe at risk, but that should be just a short segment of that wall. And that's something, again, we can handle that at the permitting stage. Otherwise, plans, move.
Yes, and we've worked, and the owner's been very responsive to staff and working with us on the architecturals, and they're showing for the phase one, this is going to be constructed in two phases, for phase one, all brick building, and I think that the architecture that's going to be in phase two is going to be very nice in terms of what it's going to speak from, from Greenland Drive.
I think it'll be a nice addition to the area.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman, move for approval, subject to have comments.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have one item under mandatory referral this evening, that being Kensington Lot 7, a reduction of the drainage easement, Joe Swanson Jr., developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a request for mandatory referral to abandon 10 feet of an existing drainage easement located on Lot 7 of Kensington Square subdivision. You all will be, will be seeing in the future a site plan for an addition to this building because they are, they are growing during this economy, and they need an additional area to expand their business. The building, as you can see on the exhibit that was included in your agenda, the existing building that's already there has already encroached onto the drainage easement and did so a few years ago, apparently when the building was constructed. Staff has gone out to the site and reviewed the drainage elements that are in place, and we feel that the drainage elements that were needed to service this site are nowhere close to the building, and that a reduction in the drainage easement would not be a problem for the city.
Any questions?
No questions, Chairman Lamb, I move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And the final item under staff reports and other businesses is the Competitive Cable and Video Services Act, report from the city of Murfreesboro Engineering Department on advance notice of open trench construction. This is something we've all been waiting for.
Yeah, the engineering department's deferred to the planning department. This is an act that was passed by the Tennessee General Assembly in 2008, which essentially requires property owners or developers of property of new construction to, that involves underground utilities and open trench work, to notify cable and video service providers in advance at the start of construction and the dates when the open trenches will be available. The act also requires that the cities or the municipalities, as the local permitting authority, must make notice of the requirement as part of the permit, so that when the permit's issued, that must be a condition that's placed within the permit. If you'll notice tonight on your site plan, that's been a new standard staff comment that's been added as well. We will start doing that at the site plan stage and move forward. The Tennessee General Assembly, when they adopted the act, had stated that the, that the property owners or developers would have to provide 60 days' notice unless another time period was adopted by the cities. It was a feeling, I think, in, of the city staff, and I think with the concurrence of the city council at last week's meeting, that 60 days was a long period of time to ask for notification, and the city has moved in a direction at this time to adopt a resolution where it would be a 10-day notification process, is to try to not add a hindrance to the development procedures anymore for our development community in terms of the open trenching. The, what would happen is if the, we do not abide by this law, is that when, if they're not given proper notice, that the cable and video service company providers could come back and require that the trenches that would have to be then dug for their lines to go in could be then at a cost to either the city or to the developer. We just wanted to provide you information on this act and notification of what was going to be happening, and be here to answer any questions if you have them.
Mr. Halliburton, do you have a question?
I got lost as to whose obligation it is to notify the cable people that they got 10 days to...
Well, it's really two. Essentially, it's the developer and the property owner's responsibility to make the notification, but we, as the city, also have to put the requirement on our permits.
Oh, okay.
So I guess it's a twofold process.
But leaving a ditch open for 60 days, waiting on the cable people would be completely out of kilter, so that's why we moved it down to, what, 10 days?
Yes, sir, 10 days is what the city council has approved by resolution.
Makes sense.
Mr. Young, I might add, it's not a requirement that the trench stay open for 10 days. The person who's doing the excavation, or the company doing the excavation, will let the cable provider know how long and when it'll be open. It doesn't have to stay open for the 10 days. 10 days would be under, and is under the resolution council adopted, the amount of advance notice that the developer, contractor, or the city, in case it's water and sewer or a city job that's being done, has to give to the cable providers. And this is also limited to people who have either a city franchise or a statewide franchise and have announced that they intend to conduct business here in our area. So we don't need to look through the Yellow Pages or go to the internet to try to find anyone who might happen to think that they want to run a line someplace. It is limited to those who either have a local or a statewide franchise, so. And with the 10-day advance note, and 60 days was kind of workable, we felt, because projects move faster than that, or sometimes, that, once you're ready to go, you move faster than that. So we felt that 10 days, and the state statute allows us to reduce it to 10 days, and staff had recommended that, and council agreed at last meeting.
Yeah, Ms. McGannon had stated at the last meeting as well that, you know, even if the trench was only open one day, that that would be, she thought, acceptable so long as the proper notification requirements had been met.
When is the effective date of this?
It is in effect now.
Any other questions?
And we're trying our best to try to get the word out to you all, to our city council, and to also the people at home who may be watching and listening, or to our development community, is we don't want anyone to be taken by surprise by this new state law.
There's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
I don't know if this requires a motion, I think we were basically giving you information.
It required action by the council, but this is notification to the planning commission of...
I will point out this, in looking back over the subdivision regulations, we'll probably put something there that will also help get people's information. Basically, we want to get the word out, we want to be helpful in this process.
Okay, Mr. Adalot, thank you very much. Mr. Adalot, do you have anything else?
Yes, Mr. Ives has an item of mandatory referral that he would like to bring up as a additional item for you to consider.
Mr. Ives, good evening. Chairman Lamb, members of the planning commission, I didn't want to not have a chance to speak for at least a couple minutes tonight. We do have a mandatory referral for a partial release of an easement. There is a TVA easement across the property on Ravenwood Drive. This is an easement that was acquired by MED from TVA about 30 years ago. It has been discovered that a house was built extending into, or encroaching about two feet into this easement. The MED staff, the, the program, the general manager and the engineers there have looked at this and feel that this, the house is not a threat to public safety or to the operations of the line that's in this easement, and it's all right with them if we allow the house to stay. So I've been working with, the house is under contract and is about to close, I'm working with the title attorney to come up with an appropriate document, whether it's a quit claim or just a waiver for purpose of this house, but subject to approval of the city attorney of the actual document that is executed, we ask your approval for this release of an easement that's owned by the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe there's a copy of the, what's denominated a property survey attached to my memo that you all have, if there are any questions.
Another good reason to get a survey when you're purchasing a piece of property.
It is, and it's also a good idea to have a survey when you start to build a house, when you're anywhere near an easement.
That's true.
I believe this house was built in the mid-1990s, so it's been several years of sitting there.
It was built in the 80s.
No, sir, I don't think it was. I think the house was actually built in the 90s because the subdivision River Wood was subdivided in the 90s.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
We have one more...
Motion carries.
...that I'd like to have.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chris Griffith, our city engineer, has what I call would be a public service announcement he'd like to make to you and to the public who might be listening. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mr. Adalot. Chairman Lamb, I couldn't miss the opportunity to speak to you like everyone else has tonight on our department. The Tennessee Department of Transportation will begin a bridge replacement, partial bridge replacement, deck repair project for two bridges located on Broad Street, basically around the Dodge Store. One actually is, completes the intersection of Broad Street and Main Street, and the other one is just, as I said, just adjacent to the other side of the Dodge Store. This project is expected to begin next week and will be completed by June 15th. I believe we have a couple of downtown events, one being the Jazz Festival, and then also, of course, Spring Fling and some other things happening directly downtown that would be impacted by it. Expect to get, as I understand, the Department of Transportation will be getting notices out to the local businesses on Friday and Monday, showing the limits of the construction, and we're also, are employing them to get some variable message boards out so we can get, get word to the driving public about the upcoming construction. Also noticed that there was an article in Saturday's D&amp;J about the, about the project, and I understand that there'll be some more press releases from the Department of Transportation, but realizing the large viewing audience that the planning commission has, I'd like to take advantage of this opportunity.
It's right up there at the Super Bowl.
Give or take a...
A few million.
Yeah, a few million dollars.
Any comments or questions about this?
It's going to be tough for a couple of the planning commissioners to get to work in the morning.
Couple of us going in the morning.
You just ride your magic carpet on that.
Appreciate the opportunity, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Appreciate it. Mr. Adalot, do you have anything else, sir?
That's all we have for tonight.
Okay. If there's no other business, we stand adjourned. I want to thank the youth leadership, Rutherford, for coming. Once again, all four members made it through the whole meeting, didn't go to sleep or anything on it, they didn't sneak out, so thank you for being here and urge you to keep involved and keep informed about your local governments. We stand adjourned.